Call this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mr. Stevens. If you could call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Knoll?
President.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. McGlynn?
Here.
Mr. Isner?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
All present.
I do need a motion to amend the agenda to add a presentation from VDOT.
So move.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Oh, aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Here.
Mr. Isner?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Aye.
First, we have a proclamation commemorating Juneteenth and Freedom Fest, and I'm not sure who. Do you want to explain, and then I can come down and present the proclamation? Sorry, if I would just go further down on the piece of paper, I would see that you are going to present with Rachel Smith from Parks and Rec, as well as Liz Montgomery, first Vice President of the York James City Williamsburg Chapter of the NAACP, and they will be, she will be receiving the proclamation.
Yes, so I have with me today, I have NAACP members. I have Liz Montgomery, who's the first Vice President, and I have Charles Gates, and he's the second Vice President. And I have Tawana Golson, who serves on the NAACP Executive Committee. And I have Rachel Smith, who's Operations Manager for Parks and Recreation.
Right.
So we have all been working on the first ever Freedom Fest event, which was the vision of the NAACP. And it's been a pleasure collaborating with both of them, with all of them. One of the key things to the event was certainly to educate the community on the importance of Juneteenth and that type of thing. So, thank you, guys.
All right, I'll come down there, do the proclamation.
All right, the proclamation commemorating Juneteenth and Freedom Fest. Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth Independence Day or Freedom Day, is the annual holiday commemorating the end of slavery in the United States as its oldest nationally celebrated commemoration and ending of slavery. And whereas, on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended and that enslaved were now free. Two and a half years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, this day came to be known as Juneteenth and celebrated as a symbolic date representing freedom of Black Americans. And whereas, the historic triangle region of Virginia encompassing Williamsburg, Jamestown, and Yorktown has a rich history deeply intertwined with the important stories and contributions of Black Americans. One of the nation's earliest, including the Free Black Settlements established in the early 1800s in James City County. And whereas, Freedom Fest is an annual celebration that honors the legacy of Juneteenth, freedom, and ongoing fight for racial justice, equity, and providing meaningful opportunity for the community to come together, reflect on history, and recommit to the unfinished work of building a more just and equitable society. And whereas, the commemoration of Juneteenth is a time to celebrate the resilience, strength, and contributions of Black Americans locally across the country to educate ourselves and future generations about the important chapter in our nation's history and to rededicate ourselves to the principles of equality, equity, justice, and freedom for all.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Chair of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia, hereby proclaim June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth Independence Day. And I encourage all residents to participate in the Freedom Fest event and other local events and activities that honor the legacy of Juneteenth and the ongoing work and effort towards racial justice and equity. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the County of James City, Virginia to be affixed this 28th day of May, 2024. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, I think Liz would like to give a special invitation to Freedom Fest. But I would like to thank the Board for the proclamation, which certainly further highlights the importance of the Juneteenth holiday and its place in our American history. And certainly here, being an employee of James City County, would continue to like to thank the Board for its efforts in supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion for all. Because events like Freedom Fest, our Employee Black History Program, and Juneteenth Program certainly serve as those vehicles that continue to move the efforts forward. Not only to celebrate, because often people think about just a celebration, but it's to also remember and to educate and to continue to build greater wellness. So, thank you very much.
So, Liz.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you very much for having the NAACP honored with this proclamation. Thank you so much for Juneteenth. Well, I'm just going to give you, you know, when you give a singer a microphone, all she wants to do is start singing. But I'm not going to do that to you all today. But what I am going to tell you is, this this holiday could not have been done without the efforts of Opa Lee. If you all don't know who she is, you've got these iPhones. I want you to Google her. But she is the woman from Texas, an educator and an advocate, that actually walked and walked through Williamsburg. And in 20, when she was 91 years old, walking with a petition to go to Washington, DC, to have this signed into law by President Biden. And she came to First Baptist Church to ring that freedom bell, which is the same freedom bell that was rung when President Barack Obama opened the National Museum of African-American History in Washington, DC. So, we have a lot of history that we can talk about. But I'm going to ask Charles to come up here, because he has all in his head, because he is the third Vice President that's been organizing all of this. And he can tell you more about June 10th, Juneteenth activities that will be happening at Freedom Park on Saturday, June 15th. So, I'm going to let Mr. Charles do that for me. And, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of education. Don't forget that name, Opa Lee. Opa Lee. Opa Lee. Google her and look her up. She's important and worthwhile. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery, and I will be brief. The Freedom Fest, this is our third year. This is our first year in JACC. So, we want to thank you for allowing us to be here in James City County. What is to be expected on June 15th from 1:00 to 5:00 at Freedom Park? Over 40 vendors, and no, there will not be the American Cancer Society, the American Lung Association, or any of those other national chains. We have organizations such as Free Kind, who focuses on human trafficking. We have I Am Enough, who focuses on domestic violence, Here for the Girls, Breast Cancer, and the list goes on and on and on and on, not to include the two food trucks we have, the WRL Bookmobile from our own regional library, as well as an ice cream truck. And to boot, there is a gentleman going to be making kettle corn there. So, this is not just for the Board of Supervisors, this is for all of you. We want all of you to come out there, come with an empty stomach, because we want you to get full, not only with the food that we're going to have there, but with the education. And our theme is, and I'm going to leave you with this, synergistic collaboration through education and entertainment. I rest.
Let's get to it. That brings us to number two, Governor's EMS Awards. Fire Department, Chief Ryan Ash.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. It's my privilege this afternoon to point out that the Fire Department was selected for several EMS Awards last week. You may remember, about this time a year ago, the Fire Department was selected for three awards at our local EMS Awards held at Busch Gardens for many years in the spring. And when you are selected for the local award, it gets nominated and forwarded on as the region's nomination to the Governor's Awards. And last week, on Monday, we were invited to the Governor's Mansion, and we were notified that we had received two of the 2023 EMS Governor's Awards. And the first of those was for outstanding contribution to health and safety. And I think that really highlights some of the programs we've done with annual physicals to make sure our folks are medically ready to work. Our annual physical agility test, or physical ability test, to make sure they're physically ready to work. Our peer support team, to make sure that we're taking care of their mental health and that they're ready mentally to be at work. Cancer prevention efforts, like two sets of turnout gear, reducing carcinogens in the workplace. Our Safety Committee, who investigates accidents and injuries. And I think really, that's a highlight of all those programs coming together, and we were honored to be recognized, both locally and at the governor's level for that. And the second award we were selected for is Outstanding EMS Agency, or commonly known as EMS Agency of the Year. And I think that while we like all recognition, that's really a big deal for our folks. They've spent a lot of time in the last few years, really increasing our level of training, practicing their craft, the additional tools. And we expect a lot of our providers, and I think our community expects a lot out of our providers. So, things like ultrasounds in the field and ventilators, our whole blood program, and the culmination of all those things together. Medical Director, who's actively engaged with our folks out in the street, really came together, and we were selected for the Agency of the Year Award, and that's a really big deal. And if it wasn't for the men and women of our department who are out serving our community every day, we wouldn't have been able to get that recognition. I think that's really a big deal for our folks.
That is outstanding. Congratulations, and please pass our congratulations on to your department. And I'm sure other Board members will want to say something, and will also want to get a picture.
Sure, and I did want to add that also last week, at Busch Gardens, was the 2024 Awards, where we were nominated for a variety of things. Several of our providers were nominated for Provider of the Year for this year, EMS Leadership. Our Medical Director was nominated, and our department was nominated for two Excellence in EMS Awards. And we were selected for one of those, for our Advanced Care Paramedic Program. And that's really, we have a number of providers who we've trained to additional level. Some of the equipment I mentioned, the ventilators, the whole blood program, advanced airway techniques. And those are out there, they can fill in as our EMS Supervisor, and they're also distributed across our county. That really are performing at a higher level of care. And that program was recognized for the PEMS Award this year that we'll get forwarded to the Governor's Awards for next year. So, excited about that opportunity for our folks as well.
I just want to say, I love our Fire Department. They come to Colonial Heritage almost every day, and everybody loves them there, including me, who had my smoke alarms go off at 5:00 AM one morning, and I can't reach them. So, thank you. We thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
So much.
Chief, to let everybody know how proud we are of the department and all the hard work that gets put in there. You know, there's a lot of times, I'm a little closer than most with the department as far as knowing what goes on. But it's amazing, the hours and time that are put in in just a working day, which may be 2:00 in the morning. And maybe your biggest time right there, where most of us are asleep and safe in our beds, and we're glad that you and your team are out there to protect us and help us when we need it, and we need that extra medical care, or fire EMS, any of it. And just want to say thank you. And also, it's not related to it, but the foam, I'm noticing more departments are getting rid of certain classes of foam. Do we have that in, or are we taking that out of operations?
Yes, we've taken all of that out. At one point, we had some that was still, a couple of buckets that were still in for training, but all of that's been removed.
That's great news.
Yeah. So, foam for many years contained a chemical in it that's found to cause a lot of health and safety issues, and that's been removed.
And that can go through the gear and everything. So, it's not just, you know, so that there's a lot of things that are fine. And with that foam was really, it's a great foam to use, but it's not great for the user. So, I'm glad, glad to see we're getting to it.
There's actually a lot of research being done right now, that potentially the same chemical that was contained in that foam is actually part of the treatment for our protective equipment.
Right.
So, perhaps that the gear we're wearing actually contains the thing that we're trying to prevent from getting on us. So, more to come on that.
Good. Let's look into that, so we make sure that
Yes, sir.
all of our personnel are very well protected, but safe at the same time. Thank you, Chief.
Of course, I want to join in asking you to express our appreciation to our staff for the outstanding work that they're doing and the recognition that they've received in this particular instance. It's just another indication of the quality of our employees and of the dedication that they have to their job. And in a sense, what I want to say is that those awards that were received really draw a direct line to the budget that we adopted earlier this year, because it basically said how important it is for us to recognize the crucial role that attracting and retaining the very best staff requires. And the fact that, you know, we were able to look out and see the recognition coming to the county for the outstanding performance, not just because it's another award you can hang on the wall, but because it reflects the kind of quality of service that people can expect in the county. So, I really do appreciate everything that you've done. And we want to make sure that message gets back to the folks who were responsible for this award.
Sir, thank you.
Thank you. If we can get a quick picture with the chief, that'd be great. Come on. Congratulations, Chief. That brings us to VDOT Quarterly Update. Mr. Rossi Carroll, VDOT Williamsburg Residency Administrator.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and the distinguished members of the Board. I appreciate y'all having me here today to go over the VDOT Quarterly Transstation Update. This update, or quarter, runs from January 1st to March 31st, 2024. In that timeframe, we completed 567 work orders in the county. We received 690 in that same timeframe. It is a 82% completion rate with 123 still outstanding. Majority of our work during that timeframe was drainage, ditching, drainage repairs, sweeping, pavement, patching, those type of things. Getting ready for the summer, which is our, you know, our construction season really never stops, but it's really our main construction season for paving, which will get kicked off here in July, talking about as we move forward. Current projects, we have our guardrail hit contract. That's an on-call contract. We've completed 107 of the 108 hits that we've identified in the county so far. We also have the Richmond Road Bike Path Sidewalk Improvement Project. It's about a little less than a half a mile sidewalk and bike lane project to increase pedestrian and bikeway connectivity there from Croker Road to Church Road, up north to Anaway. That project, it has a fixed completion date of October 31st, 2024, and moving right along. We also have the, in the same area, the Croker Road widening project, which will widen Croker Road from two lanes to four lanes from about Rose Lane out to Richmond Road. And that project is under construction. They continue to install in temporary stormwater management basins, doing a lot of cut and fill for the main line. They're also installing storm drainage. Next big hurdle is going to be starting the bridge abutment over the CSX Railroad. So, we have Route 60 between 30 and New Kent Line. That project is ongoing. You'll see the contractors out there on a daily basis. We've done all the slip lining for the cross drains, and they are still working on open cuts. And that's, when I say open cuts, that's the replacement of the existing pipe infrastructure under the concrete pavement or under the roadway. They have about four more of those to complete, and that project will be completed. It should be completed by the end of June. Some of the completed projects we have is the bridge replacement over Dyosken Creek. That project had a fixed completion date of 4/7/25. Contractor completed that approximately a year early and was within budget. So, happy, that's the Hicks Island area of the county, and happy that that bridge was able to get completed early. And they took up the temporary bridge that was put in place, and everything's seated. So, we're in the process of closing that out. And then we also completed a sidewalk project that included a section of Ironbound Road and a section of Monticello Road. Some upcoming projects, so our plant mix, our PM 5M, which is a FDR Full Depth Reclamation Project. It grinds up the existing pavement, cement treats it, additives, and then puts down new asphalt, new pavement at two grade. That project is going to kick off July 9th, and it's going to start in the Kingsport, Kingspoint, Kingsport, Kingsport area. And I know part of that includes a waterline project that the JCSA did. They will be grinding all of that up and redoing those roads, setting them at the right grades. So, have new subbase and pavement. So, that's supposed to kick off July 9th. You will see some work going on, some design work. They'll do some quaring. They have to get their mixed design approves, all that stuff, for the next month until they get started as part of that process. And then our
Just can I just ask Mr. Carroll to, is that Kings Point or?
Kings Point off of Route 31?
Right, yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
I bet not, is it Kings, not Kingswood?
Hold on. So, I have a list of all the roads that are in it, and I will go through them.
I don't want to have to fight Supervisor McGlynn over here.
So, the roads that will be included, so it's Kingswood.
Kingswood.
Kingswood. So, the roads that are included in this, so there's three subdivisions. So the roads that are included in this, so there's three subdivisions, so Wallace Road, Shelby Lane, Mosby Lane, Orange Drive, Oak Road, Holly Road, Ferry Road, Richneck Road, Spring Road, West Kingswood Drive, Royal Court, Regency Court, Exeter Court, North Soulgrave Court, and South Soulgrave Court. So the latter part of those are in the Kingswood area. Up top, there's some off of Government Road out that way. We also have another plant mix project that will kick off towards the end of July, scheduled to start July 28th, with a fixed completion date of November 15th, 2024. That has a fairly extensive list of roads which I've provided across the county, so I'm tickled that we were able to get as many, as many roads into the system as we were this go-round. Couple other projects to note. We have shared, two coming projects, a shared use path on Long Hill Road. That's projected advertisement is the July 14th, 2026. We also have the Pocahontas Trail. Phase 1 is coming up around the same time. We also have Jamestown Transfer Hydraulic Lift System. That is going to be kicking off here in the next month, and that will just, that's on the Glass House side of the Jamestown side. Only one of those bridges will be working, and while they're working on the other ones. So they are switching those over from chain-driven to hydraulic transfer bridges. What I'm saying, that's where you connect to the boat from the dock. Those bridges are being replaced. So one of them active, only one. So we've done a lot of maintenance to both of them to make sure that they hopefully get us through the summer until we get to the next one and transfer both of those. And then we have a rev share project for the Centerville Jolly Pond Signal Installation. Upcoming project too that involves the county is the Gap C Design Build Project. That's the eight and a half miles left on I-64 east and westbound, adding lanes in each direction. And then we have the Route 60 Unbonded Concrete Overlay Project, which we're doing, that's why we're doing the contract for all the prep work for the infrastructure out there. We advertised that, we did not get a bid on it, so we're going back and looking at some MOT and some construction ways, so we hope to get that back out for advertisement. But we're going to also have to look at Gap C and make sure that we're not doing both of those projects at the same time. So it may have to wait until Gap C gets completed before we do the work on 60, because Route 60 is sort of the alternate route if something were to happen on I-64 doing those projects. So, safety funds, we expended all but $143 for this fiscal year of our county's safety funds. Some of those were sidewalk repairs, some daylighting, and some curb DI repairs. Traffic studies, we did a general safety review study on Long Hill Road. I'm not going to go through all of that, but it really talks about installing stop bars and some reflective tapes and some signs. Looked at Lafayette School area, looked at the Williamsburg Montessori School area, and also at Buford Road, Buford Road. We did a speed study on Hicks Island Road. From that, the recommendation was to put, install some winding road signs both north and south side of the curves and north of the bridge to include a 25 mph advisory. We did a intersection there at London Company Way. That recommendation was to install a yield sign. Land use has been pretty busy in the county. Between plan reviews, we've done 68 in the county since July 1st, which is our fiscal, start of our fiscal year. We've issued 296 utility permits or work permits in the roadway, and we've closed out 375. This fiscal year, we've added, so far we've added .34 miles of new roadway into the system, and that was the Forest Glen Section 5 area. And that pretty much concludes my quarterly update. I'd be glad to take any comments or questions at this time.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Ms. Knoll?
Mr. Carroll?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you've gotten a lot of complaints about Rose Lane. Has anything transpired out there? The neighbors living across the street have been calling and complaining about the noise and so forth, and have we been able to do anything? Because the contractors are parking across the street on a rented piece of land.
So I went out and spoke to the resident myself.
Did you?
I did. And we were working with them, trying to, really scheduling more than anything. I know some of the residents may work from home, so I understand the daytime noise. There is a lot of noise with construction, though, and when you, you know, there's some clearing of trees, there may have been a buffer at one time from road noise and construction noise. But we are working with them, trying to, really on what our schedules are and trying to do what we can.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that, because I've talked to him at length, and he says, I work from home, and then I just kind of laughingly said, get some Bose headsets. He says, Barbara, I wear them anyway, and I still can't hear. So, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we have. We've, I've gone out and met with him myself.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
A couple, the, I know this is getting in, we're to York County side of James City County, but the turn lane, left-hand turn lane going into Wawa that is no turn, and even has a sign up, is still causing that whole intersection to go crazy, because people want to turn left instead of going, staying on Richmond Road and turning right where they need to turn right, they want to come down and turn left. So if there's anything we can do as far as
The traffic blocking up, queuing up because of people trying to turn left into the Wawa?
That's right.
Yes.
And it's queuing everything up in the
So we have some signs there, but I do have traffic engineering reviewing that from a previous request.
Okay.
Once I get to the recommendations, I'll be glad to share them.
Right.
Fun being there when they're turning in front of
I understand.
And there's a, there's a few areas, Ford Road is, the grass is growing up on each side of it, and it's causing puddles to start becoming a problem in the road itself. And of course, everybody drives down Ford Road like it's an interstate, and I'm sure a few people called me on that one, but that's the, that's the fact of things.
Let me make sure, assume it's really high shoulder areas?
Yes, it is. That's it, it can't get off. Now, in the, about middle way of Ford Road, there's some spots in there that it's, it's actually puddling in the middle of the road during rain, and it's not going off, it's kind of, just kind of dry up to get it off the road. So it's a few low spots in the road itself that is causing water too. And I know we've had a lot of rain this spring, so you know, it does highlight a lot of this. And then I saw y'all put a new sign up at Dyosken Hockaday, and I guess the green is, it's a green and white sign. The green is for what's maintained by VDOT, and the white is a privately maintained road on the signs.
Yeah, but those signs, the street name signs are actually installed by the locality.
By the what?
Locality.
Okay, I didn't know we installed those. Okay.
But you're right, it'll have up there, usually if it's a route number, the county does theirs, puts a route number by the name. We use the route panels.
Uh-huh.
You know, it has the route number on it.
Right.
But the county also includes the route number on their panels for names.
Okay, great, cool, thank you.
Just a couple of quick things. First of all, appreciate the inclusion of those streets off of Government Road. I think that they're certainly in need of some resurfacing, and this ought to help a lot with that. I was curious about, you know, the Pocahontas Trail Section 1 is advertised, the advertisement's set for February of 2026. What would we expect then to see in terms of community meetings in advance of that?
So usually, as part of the design process, we have public hearings, and that's, will happen in this, as part of the design process for this project as well. I thought we had, didn't we have, okay, I thought we had a schedule for that, but
Well, if you have one, if you could just
We'll share it as soon as we have it.
Thank you, okay. I appreciate that.
I normally get about a six-month list of what public hearings are coming up, and I'll check on it just to make sure.
Okay, thanks. And just one other thing in that is, how about that project on Governor Duffrey? Good note, Duffrey and the vineyards?
Yes, sir.
Is that project now
It's still, you're talking about the pipe, the pipe project.
Yes, right.
So it's still in our process to do. We do have the contractor on in contract, just haven't gotten to that one yet.
Okay, thank you.
But, but that also, that same contractor is the one that's doing the work for me out on Route 60. So I have him pretty tied up, thinking that we would be under construction towards the end of the summer with repaving or doing unbonded concrete overlay on Route 60. So it kind of took precedence on trying to get that done before we repaved it. However, we did not get any bids on that project, so I still need them to finish that work before I put them somewhere else.
Just, it's been a long, long time.
I know, it's, but that one there, there's no safety concerns that I'm aware of on the roadway.
Right.
So that's why it doesn't, you know, it's, I have to kind of weigh
Sure.
Those priorities.
Thanks, Mr. Carroll.
You're welcome.
I just want to thank you for taking the time earlier today for a meeting, and then I've been hearing a lot from Kingswood, because some of their roads were paved and some were not, and so the ones that were not, I think, are tired of driving on the extremely rough pavement, so I know they're glad to get a date and
Yeah, and I appreciate their patience, I really do. I mean, we looked at it, we worked with, kind of worked with JCSA on the plan for paving with that, and the roads that were paved weren't in our schedule, so they went ahead and paved those, but I didn't see any need for them to pave something for six months, and then we come right back through and tear it up to get down to the subbase. I know that, I know it's been a little rough with the patching for the, for the water, for the waterline replacement, but if you can just bear with us for, for a couple more months. Now, there will be some construction going on for the, you know, July, August, September, and this, there will be some rough patches in that as well. So I asked them to continue the patience as we get, but the final product is going to be very nice, would be a lot better than what they're dealing with before the waterline project.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
That brings us to today's consent calendar, which consists of the following items. Contract award for adult special events concert series amount not to exceed $200,000. Contract award $184,502 body camera systems and video auto tagging. Contract award $134,500 War Hill Sports Complex Field netting designation of voting delegate for the NACO Annual Conference. Grant award $250,000 Department of Historic Resources Preservation Virginia Rescue Archaeology at Smiths Field Historic Jamestown. Grant award $48,000 Opioid Abatement Authority Kinship Navigator Program Expansion and Minutes Adoption. Does anyone wish to pull an item? If not, may I please get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Mr. Isbell?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
That brings us to board discussions. Police Drone First Responder and AED Delivery Experiment, Chief Jamison, and looks like Assistant Chief Dollman for backup. How are you?
Good, good, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I appreciate you allowing us to take time to present to you an exciting program that we can expand on and kind of put us on the map when it comes to drone and our first responder program. I am not a subject matter expert in this program, that's why Assistant Chief Dollman is here, and also Sergeant Tiara Suggs, who can probably answer the questions better than I can. But we were approached last fall regarding an opportunity to join a program and kind of be a first in the state of Virginia to move something forward. So what I'd like to do now is ask Assistant Chief Dollman to come forward, talk through this with you. I will be here to answer any questions, and so will Sergeant Suggs. So Assistant Chief Dollman?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm very excited to be here to talk to you today about this program. I believe that technology is one of the ways that we're able to move forward with law enforcement, and it's going to be very important to us in the future. So I will talk just a little bit, very briefly today, about the Drone First Responder Program. Yep, right, I'm on the wrong page here. So I'll start off just by mentioning what our current drone program is, and we do have a very good drone program, but it is fairly basic. We have seven drones that are piloted drones, or five piloted and two tethered drones that our officers fly to emergency incidents currently today. We have nine certified and licensed pilots, and they fly for lots of different reasons, including tactical response if our SWAT team is out doing something, and search and rescue, accident reconstruction, those kinds of things. So you can see search and rescue, tactical support, accident documentation, those are all reasons that we use our drones currently today. The drone team members are mostly regular patrol officers, and they respond either during their off-duty time, or if a drone pilot is working, they might, and they're not busy doing something else, they might be able to respond directly to an incident. But they're all folks who have other jobs in the police department, we don't have anyone that's just a drone pilot. Moving on to, what does a Drone First Responder Program look like? So a Drone First Responder Program would expand the capabilities of our current drone program and allow us to fly drones to any public safety call in our designated area. And it wouldn't be the whole county, it would start off with a very small area, about a two-mile diameter circle in the area, in James City County. But we'd be able to fly to any public safety call in that designated area. This would enhance our public safety response, it would enhance officer safety, because if we're able to get the drone on scene, so we can see what that incident is ahead of our officer's response, that makes it much safer for us to go there, whether it's a traffic crash or a domestic incident. If we can see what's happening there, we can see if maybe somebody has left, or if something, you know, if we need to send more officers, we can do that. If we need to call off some officers, we can do that. So it enhances our officer safety. It improves our efficiency because we're able to send the right resources to the calls. So if it's something where we can call people off, we can do that. However, it does require extensive FAA review and approval. So this is where we kind of get hung up. We're not experts in FAA approvals, and we need assistance with that part of it. And it would ensure that our drones are consistently available during the program operating hours. So right now, if our drone pilots are home and they're off, we can call them into work, but it's going to be an extended response time. If we have this program set up and operating, then the response will be very quick, pretty much immediately once somebody calls 911. So, very excited to say that we were approached by Virginia Commonwealth University, Dr. Ornato, he's a cardiologist with VCU. He heard about James City County from Dr. Luca, who's the Emergency Medical Director, and he's associated with a cardiologist from Duke University. Duke is who actually got this grant from the American Heart Association. The American Heart Association gave Duke a grant to explore lots of ways to improve outcomes in cardiac arrest situations. One of the things that they are included in their grant was the ability to fly AEDs, Automatic External Defibrillators, to the scene of out-of-hospital cardiac arrest calls, so that the AED arrives very, very quickly, more quickly than if we were waiting waiting on the closest police car or the closest ambulance to arrive, uh, and then a bystander can take that AED from the drone and apply it to the cardiac arrest victim. Um, time is critical in cardiac arrest cases, uh, and so getting that AED on scene a couple of minutes faster could make a real difference to somebody. Uh, that's what the grant is for, and that's the experimental part of this process, um, but in order to participate, they will assist us in setting up that drone first responder program, because we have to have that in place in order to do the experiment. So, they're going to assist us setting up, getting over the regulatory hurdles, getting the FAA authorizations, uh, purchasing the equipment, doing the training, in order to conduct the experiment, uh, and the experiment that they want to conduct is to demonstrate that we can fly AEDs to the scene of an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest, and that they arrive more quickly than they otherwise would if they were in a police car or an ambulance. Uh, the expenses to, to, uh, related to achieving the DFR status and the experiment would be covered by the grant. So, the benefits to Jame City County are that this would establish a drone first responder program here in the county, uh, it would enhance our response to public safety calls for service in that designated area, and hopefully down the road, it might be years down the road, but we would expand that to other parts of the county. It would improve officer safety, it would improve our efficiency, uh, and we would get the assistance setting that up, uh, with that complex regulatory approval, and we would also get the equipment and training that we probably would not otherwise, uh, be able to have. The costs to Jame City County obviously are staff time, however, uh, while, while we're working with VCU and Duke on the experiment, however, that time, we would be reimbursed for that time, uh, the equipment, software, and other necessary purchases would also be reimbursed to the county, and then once the grant is concluded, the drone first responder program obviously would operate as staffing and our budget would allow, uh, and, you know, we'll, we'll see how that goes, once we get the program up and operating, to see how effective it is, uh, and then we'll make decisions about how much time to devote to it, uh, moving forward. Uh, so that's all I have for you today, I'm happy to try and answer any questions that you have, or lean on Chief Jameson or Sergeant Suggs if I can't answer.
Your questions?
The, um, so there would be, would it, would we then have an officer so that we had this program going and, and we were, it was always available, would an officer be dedicated just during the day, or dedicated just to that and would remain in that two-mile radius so that that drone could operate, they wouldn't go, you know, outside that area, because then they wouldn't be in, within that zone, is that correct, is that what I'm hearing?
Sure, well, you're, you're on the right track, we would establish, uh, a launch point for the drone, uh, right now, in order to make it easy and, uh, convenient for us, we need to have somewhere where we have good roof access, we have a good, good network access, uh, we have power, all of the things that are available, that we need to, to launch the drone, uh, so we would set that location up, and that would be the, where the drone launched from, so initially, we're, we're planning on launching from the law enforcement center, uh, and cover a two-mile circle, that's typically what the FAA authorizes, is a two-mile radius, uh, yeah, two-mile radius circle, uh, so we would launch from the law enforcement center, uh, and cover that two-mile circle, uh, around the law enforcement center.
And I know with, um, you know, watching some of our officers, and Sergeant back there was on one of the scenes, and it was really, you know, unique to be able to watch them in their operations, what they were doing, and, and there's a limited amount of time, will, will we end up getting some different drones that can stay up longer than the period of time that we're allowed, or that we have now, so would we, I guess, get a stronger drone to, to give us more flexibility for our time length in the air?
Yes, sir. Uh, the, the drones would have to be able to carry that small payload of the AED, uh, so they would be a larger, more commercial grade variant of similar to drones that we have now, but larger, more robust, uh, that have, they can go farther, faster, and loiter on station longer than what we currently have, uh, and plan is for us to have two or three of those more robust drones, so that if we do have to alternate them out, uh, we could do that.
It was amazing for the, for the board, when I was watching the drones in operation at the fire, you know, and ordered to get up high enough to see where the actual burn was, you know, you're working from down here, and, you know, and, and you've got stuff twenty and thirty feet above you, and you're trying to figure out exactly where that burn is to put the water on it, and rather than setting up a ladder truck and having to go up, oh, no, we need to move down twenty feet, or, or, you know, longer than the drone was able to go up there and say the fire's moving in this direction, and the heat is here, and this is where we need to put the equipment and all that, and that was just one incident, I've seen the actual drones work, and I think it's a great tool to have in our department, and especially for searching for somebody, that heat detector, we'll see someone in the woods, moving throughout the woods and that's the way, where, you know, with the volunteers and with the fire department, having to go out and search a large area, that drone can cover areas so much quicker than we could even with, um, full-wheel drives and, and that's the way, so, you know, it's a, I think it'd be a wonderful benefit, not only for our citizens, but for our police department to have that extra tool in their tool belt for something, so, thank you.
I think it's, I think it's really a great idea, I mean, I love it, and, um, it's just makes everything safer, you know, I was a former flight attendant, first responder on airplanes, and that AED is phenomenal, and anybody can work it, and so getting it to there, and you only have only twenty minutes with heart attacks, that's a, that's a real plus, I mean, I hope, we're the first department doing it, right?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I, I don't think anyone else is doing it in Virginia, this is just an experimental program, um, so this is to prove the concept that it can be done.
Sure, I think it's fabulous, thank you.
Partnering the, kind of our partner, uh, agency that's, that's also working with Duke right now is Forsyth County, North Carolina, they've started, they're a little bit ahead of us, they, they had kind of a jump start, um, but they have done a couple of experimental runs, and, and they've posted some videos online and things, so if you want to look up Forsyth County, you can certainly look at that and.
Forsyth County, okay, thank you.
See what they're doing.
Thank you, I think it's, it's a great idea.
Chief, how long is the experimental, uh, scheduled to, experiment scheduled to run?
The, the grant period is five years, um, we're not expected to have the DFR, we give, they've given us about a year or so to get the drone first responder program up and running, and then, so about a year from now, we would start to do some of the experimental things, where initially, it would just be flying to a simulated, uh, cardiac arrest call at some address point, um, and just demonstrating that proof of concept, how long it takes, uh, how long from the time someone calls nine-one-one, uh, to when we can actually have the drone, the, the AED on the ground on site, uh, and then the experiment would progress from there, but the, the grant period is for five years, so we'll conclude prior to the end of that grant period.
I had two questions, one, it, it sort of struck me, do all of our police cars and all of our ambulances all have AEDs in them?
Yes, sir.
Every one, okay.
I believe so, yes, sir.
Quite a few, okay, and then the second question was, are you aware of, of, uh, I know you mentioned this is, the FAA is going to be talking about a two-mile circle to begin with, what's the altitude, uh, limit, do they cap the altitude limit on, on what you can do?
They do, so the drones typically fly at four hundred feet or less, uh, so that, and, and you know this, manned aviation flies at five hundred feet or higher, uh, so you have a separation there, but part of our certificate of authorization from the FAA is that if there's manned aviation in the area, uh, the drone is supposed to move away from the manned aviation, so that we don't have any conflict with any kind of manned aviation, uh, and that's one of our, one of the things we're working through.
Yeah.
Because we have a lot of manned aviation, uh, from the military bases and, and other things in our area.
I, I can tell you that, uh, they're supposed to be at five hundred feet, uh, sometimes I think those helicopters are a little bit lower, and they come across my house, uh, and I can tell you that, uh, I used to operate with a five-hundred-foot restriction, but if we could get down to one or two hundred feet at times, it was a lot of fun, uh, the problem is, when you see something go by you real quick, like a drone or a weather balloon, it, it creates a little, little, uh, anxiety, I think our biggest threat here would be, uh, either military aviation or helicopters predominantly going in and out of, uh, Camp, uh, Camp Perry, or, um, uh, light airplanes, uh, coming out of our own, own airport, so, you know, and that, I was just sort of curious about how that was going to be addressed, but it sounds like that would be a wonderful program, you could get the, get the goods there very quickly, so, look forward to seeing it succeed.
Sure, thank you.
One more, one more thing, if I could, um, I would love to see this in the front page of the paper.
Yeah.
And, um, a lot of times, our stuff we do, and we never see it out there, and I think you may have a connection in there, that would help.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you might be talking about there, Mr. Hippel.
But, you know, a lot of times you read, this place is doing this, this place doing this, and to be the first in Virginia, to be setting up this program and, and doing this work and all that, I just think we ought to tout, and we do, but we ought to tout even more of all the programs that we've got going on, and this is a perfect one to be the first of.
Yes, sir, and coming to you today is, is part of getting us on that road.
While it may seem that Ms. Dollman is a professional photographer, she really, that is just a part of her job, she does work very hard to get our things in the paper, and.
Yes.
Hopefully they will, but, um, this is, um, very exciting, thank you for being here today, you and the chief, the sergeant, um, appreciate it, and, um, thanks for the information, are there any further questions? So we do need to move this.
I think, Madam Chair, it was just a matter of if the board had any objections, we would not proceed forward, but it sounds like everybody is supportive, so.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us to Government Center update, Brad Reinheimer. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman, Mr. First, as promised, uh, every month, that's your work session, I am here to speak about progress regarding the new Government Center, uh, and it's been a very busy month, uh, since then, uh, since our last update, uh, we have toured the Virginia Beach facility and the Suffolk facility, and thanks to Mr. Hippel for coming along on those, saw a lot of things that we liked, and some things that maybe we didn't like as much, uh, but it was a, a lot of value to be able to go there and see that, and then a few of us, including Mrs. Larson and Mr. McGlinnan, uh, be traveling to Minnesota on Thursday and Friday of this week, uh, to tour three different facilities there, so we're looking forward to that. Uh, we did have our employee input session, uh, beginning of this month, uh, we had it right here in this room, uh, we had over one hundred employees come in and talk about what they wanted to see in a new Government Center, which I thought was pretty amazing, uh, I thought that was a really great turnout, a lot of good ideas, uh, some different ideas as well, which is always exciting, uh, but a lot of the same themes that we're seeing over and over again as well, uh, we had our first stakeholder group meeting, uh, on May fifth, or May fifteenth, uh, the majority of the folks from the stakeholder group were there, a couple had to zoom in because they were out of country, uh, but again, going well, getting a lot of input, getting a lot of buzz, a lot of discussion, which is really what I'm trying to accomplish with this, and then we heard, held our first public input meeting last week on May twenty-third at Legacy Hall, uh, we had seventeen citizens that attended that meeting, I think three were from the stakeholder group, four were from the city of Williamsburg, uh, and the others were a couple retired county employees and, and some other folks, uh, but again, very good, I gave the presentation that I've given a couple of times already, and sort of how we got to where we are today and where we're going, uh, so a lot of good questions and some good input as well, I think some of the main themes that were brought out at that public input meeting was traffic, uh, people concerned about traffic, and we are doing a traffic impact study, uh, to see how the building might impact traffic in that area, uh, the environmental impact, uh, questions about eastern state property, uh, that's overall building design, uh, LEED certification and things like that were some of the things that the public brought up at that meeting, but very well attended, uh, we're going to be doing another meeting with the stakeholder group, that are employees and a public hearing, once we get some drawings and schematics of what the Government Center might look like, so people can come in and actually see some pictures and some diagrams of things that give them a little bit of better idea of what it might look like. Uh, we had our first discussion regarding LEED certification, uh, last week with our normal builder group meeting, uh, just some discussion about what we need to do to accomplish LEED certification, how much it'll cost us, uh, especially if we want to get to silver or gold status, uh, one of my tasks is to be able to present to you, the board, what that would cost, uh, if our desire is to pursue any of those higher certifications that has a dollar value cost to us, uh, so I can tell you what that is. We also met with the architects and Dr. Keever, who's the assistant prince, or assistant superintendent, uh, with WJCC schools, and they went through much of the same things that we've been going through as far as programming, amount of people that'll be in the new school admin building if it's located there, uh, along with adjacencies, things that they want to see if it is in fact considered. We also had our graphic designer, Meg, uh, created some business cards for us that we've been handing out, and I know the camera can't see it at all from here, but, uh, this is what they look like, and I'll give some to you all so you can pass out, has a QR code on it, so folks can scan it, and it really just says, we want to hear from you, uh, it's something you can pass out at meetings, or if you have citizens talking about the Government Center, uh, that's something you can pass out, they can use their phone and scan and go right to the form where they can provide input on what they want to see in the new building. Uh, we've also set up, uh, an address, that's www.jamecitycountyva.gov/4082, where folks can go online and fill out that form, at the same place that QR code will take you. We have a phone number where folks can leave voice messages, that is seven-five-seven-two-five-nine four-zero-zero-four, and they can also send an email to jccgovcenter@jamecitycountyva.gov to provide any feedback, so we're kind of ramping up those efforts to try to get folks involved and get citizens to give input, it's one of the things I stressed at the meeting last week, was I, you know, the last thing we want to see is when the board is making that decision to have fifty, a hundred folks here saying, Government Center, I never heard of that, what are you talking about? Uh, so we're really trying to do our best to get it out there, uh, I had an interview earlier today with a reporter from the Gazette, uh, so they're going to run a story on it, and I have another one scheduled next week with WI Daily, so we can talk a little bit about it, so, it's been a busy month, a lot going on with the Government Center, it does consume a good deal of my time, uh, but I enjoy it, so, happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Thank you, any questions?
I, I, I had a couple, um, I'm sitting, thinking about this as we get preparing for the meeting, uh, the last couple of days, and I, I, I know that in the past, we have done schools, uh, where we've done, um, geothermal, uh, is geothermal under consideration for this, this building site?
It's under consideration, yes, sir.
And then the other one, I want to make sure, because you're going to consider, you have to get it right at the ground level to think about it, is, uh, the potential for, uh, solar, solar panels on, on the public buildings, you know, where we could.
We've talked about it and are considering all of those options.
Okay, so those, those are under active consideration.
Yes, sir.
That's what I want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
So I guess I would have a follow-up to that, because we did geothermo, thermal at Hornsby, um, but now, so what I've heard through the grapevine is, you can expand geothermal systems, so when you come with that type of information, including the LEED information, you'll come with the good, the bad, the ugly, I hope.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that, that, because there are some ways to make a, a very energy efficient building without doing LEED certification, I believe, and so some, just some things to take under consideration, I just want to make sure we look at all of that rounded look.
Yes, ma'am, we absolutely will.
Okay.
And you'll also have to look at that as far as land mass, you know, because you put those fields out there, and you're not going to build anything on it afterwards, so it does block the chance of adding on or changing, and, uh, you can do some parking lots and that's the way, but not structure-wise, so.
Our church just added it, but we're right next to the Palace Green, made a little bit of a difference, not going to, probably not going to build there.
Yeah, probably not.
Yeah, but, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate that. All right, that brings us to contract award four hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-seven, Upper County Park Playground Replacement, Alistair Parkinson, hello.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm here to talk about the replacement of the Upper County Park Playground, um, so just real quick, I wanted to kind of go over our playground safety, uh, program, we have, uh, two certified playground safety inspectors on our Parks and Recreation staff, and we inspect all of our Parks and Rec, ten Parks and Rec playgrounds, um, both high and low frequency, so what that means is we have staff inspecting our playgrounds on a daily basis, um, and then our more qualified our more qualified staff that work out of Veterans Park, Kidsburg, that inspect every playground on a monthly basis, and then we do a very, very detailed safety inspection three times a year that it's done by our certified inspectors for each of those playgrounds. In addition to that, we inspect the 26 WJCC school playgrounds monthly. So, we kind of have a robust playground safety management program, and in addition to that, we have a replacement program for all of our, for each of those 10 Parks and Rec playgrounds, which is in our five-year CIP. And so, today I'm here to talk about the Upper County Park Playground. I should mention, too, we have two this, in this year, this fiscal year '24, the Upper County Park Playground, and we should be back next month for the My Place Playground at the James City County Rec Center. So, as you see here is the Upper County Park Playground. It's a little unusual, it's actually divided into kind of two pieces. Most playgrounds are split between equipment for two-to-five-year-olds and five-to-12-year-olds. In this case, there's kind of some division here where there are two separate areas, that light area is the safety mulch surfacing. It's also notable that we don't have any borders at this playground, so we lose quite a bit of mulch. Oops, moving too fast. So, this playground is among our oldest. It was installed in 1999. The original manufacturer's recommendation was for the playground to be replaced in 15 years. We're seeing that to be more like 20 years for commercial playgrounds these days, but as you can see, this one is 25 years old. It's divided into two areas. We don't have the border around the mulch, so we do lose quite a bit of that safety mulch over time. It kind of creeps out. We've had fairly regular issues here with, just go back to this one, this is very sensitive, some of the platforms, we've had to replace some of the individual parts, the roof areas, quite a few slides and swings. One of the challenges, a lot of these older playgrounds, the replacement parts are no longer made, so you're getting, you know, something custom-made. There's a long lead time on playground equipment in general, but especially for outdated equipment. It's a little hard to see in this picture, but we've got a lot of mismatched colors here. You know, these playgrounds are very safe and we've kept everything going, but we've had a lot of patching together to keep it, to keep it safe and operational. And what happens, because there's such a long lead time, is if we have a piece fail, we could go months with caution tape wrapped around that area where kids can't play on it. We've spent about $9,000 on replacement pieces for this playground in the last three fiscal years. So, what we did is we, working with our purchasing department, put out a request for proposals for the replacement of this playground, and we received seven firms submitted, and we, our team, which was made up of staff from Parks and Rec General Services, our playground people, our inclusion coordinator, our grounds folks, kind of a wide range of folks, looked at it, and they selected the proposal by Cunningham Recreation. A quick run-through here, we have some multi-elements with slides and climbers, we have a zip line, which is, if anyone goes to Kidsburg Veterans Park, is one of the most popular amenities at any of our playgrounds. This is the five-to-12 area, and then we have the two-to-five area with some other climbers and slides, and then this is kind of the overall conceptual image of the entire playground put together. As you can see, it'll be in one area, surrounded by a border with the safety mulch inside. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just, not really a question, but a request that you kind of think about this. One of the aspects of the playground, I think, in this particular park is that it's probably much more heavily utilized in the summer than any other time of year.
It is, it is, and I'd say if you look at our car counters, Upper County Park, with the pool and the shelters being the biggest draw of that park, we see most of our visitation in those summer months. I will say, the folks that do come outside of the winter months are typically coming for either this playground or to use the mountain bike trails or shelter. Just anecdotally, we, our staff do talk to plenty of folks who come from Tohono or from that end of the county to Kidsburg, because it's such a special playground, because it has the zip lines, and we can bring a little bit of that up there, I think, you know, to take a little pressure off the one big major playground in the center of the county there.
So, here's the thing that I'd ask you to look at, and that is, is there an opportunity here to have some shade trees in near proximity to the playground so that it does sort of reduce the heat that kids may be playing in?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, that's great. So, I need a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
That brings us to contract award $3,133,991.06, Architectural Services for the new General Services Headquarters. Mr. Abbott?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman, Mr. First. My name is Mark Abbott. I am a capital project coordinator with the General Services Division. I am here today to request approval for the engagement of architectural and engineering services for the design of a new General Services Building. This facility will serve as a cornerstone for our organization, providing essential support for our department operations and better serve the needs of our community. Currently, General Services operates out of multi-b buildings that are outdated and inadequate to meet the growing demands of our organization. It lacks the necessary space, functionality, and efficiency required to support our expanding services effectively. Furthermore, the buildings do not meet modern safety and accessibility standards posing operational challenges and limitations. The proposed new General Services Building aims to address these shortcomings and provide a state-of-the-art facility that meets our present and future needs. Key objectives for this project include enhanced functionality, design a building layout that optimizes workflow and efficiency, ensuring seamless operations and service delivery, improved safety and accessibility, incorporate modern safety features and accessibility standards to create a safe and inclusive environment for employees and visitors, energy efficiency, integrate sustainable design principles and energy-efficient systems to minimize environmental impact and reduce operating costs. The General Services Building will be designed to a minimum LEED Silver Certification. To achieve these objectives, it is imperative to engage a qualified architectural and engineering firm with experience in designing public service facilities. The selected firm will be responsible for conducting a comprehensive needs assessment and site analysis to develop project requirements, developing conceptual designs and floor plans that reflect the functional and aesthetic preferences of our organization, preparing detailed construction documents, including architectural drawings, site plans, specifications, and cost estimates, providing oversight and construction management services during the construction phase to ensure adherence to quality standards and timelines. Via Design Architects has provided a detailed budget estimate and project timeline for the Architectural and Engineering Services Contract. It is anticipated that the design will be completed February 2026, subject to regulatory approvals. The construction of a new General Services Building is a significant investment in the future of our county and the community we serve. By approving the engagement of Architectural and Engineering Services, we can initiate the planning and design process, laying the foundation for a modern, efficient, and sustainable facility that meets the evolving needs of our organization and aligns with the county's strategic plan goals. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Thank you so much. Questions?
I got a few.
Sure.
What's wrong with the old building?
Oh, Lord.
I'm just playing with you. I think this is well overdue. The only thing I have question with is, I agree with the LEED certification or LEED building towards LEED, but the certification's always where the money's spent and the cost to have a plaque on the wall that says, "We did what we should have done and what we could have done to make it as energy-efficient as possible," but to get that plaque to hang on the wall for $200,000, to me, is not worth it. I don't know if that's exact cost, but it's somewhere around there. So, build up to that standard, but, you know, with y'all's facility, there's going to be, I would imagine, the design's not there, quite a few garage doors opening and shutting during the day, and to keep that temperature at a certain rate, and that's why it's almost be impossible with that amount of opening and shutting with vehicles coming in and out. The main part, the offices and all that, yes, I agree with. So, as you're going through that process and all that, if you would just look at those and, you know, and of course, I know all of our employees are always looking at the best benefits for our money, because it's the citizens' money, but just keep that in mind as we go forward. But this is, this is a building, ladies and gentlemen, if you've never been there, you would not believe what our county staff is operating in those huts that they call actual buildings, and those should have been torn down years ago, and they're not safe, and in part of this building ought to be a safety area, not only for y'all if something happened out there, but also if there was a hurricane or anything else. Y'all would tornado, hurricane, anything, if, you know, you definitely would be better in a rush room than the buildings you're in for hurricanes. It's my two cents.
And as Mr. Reinheimer said, it is definitely under consideration. You know, we are definitely looking at all of those, you know, using LEED as a model, if you will, but definitely taking into consideration that our building does not necessarily function as a sole standalone office building. There are many different facets, you know, to the General Services Building.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions?
The site chosen, has been chosen for this already, and I understand, was there some adjustment that had to be made for archaeological finds? Since this is the design process we're looking at right now, and I guess the design, you're saying the design process will be complete sometimes around February 26th, I'm looking at, you know, how that operates, and then is there any overlap when you actually start awarding the contract for building it? I know we don't have any estimates, you know, what the whole thing's going to cost, I would imagine, but I'm just trying to get a feel for what timeline we're looking at and how they're going to sequence together.
So, the previous site was where the water tower is behind the soccer pad, and that was where we discovered the archaeological. So, we moved to the adjacent site next to the law enforcement center.
Okay, but, so that one does not have the same kind of problems with the archaeological? Okay, that was, I wasn't, didn't understand that clearly then, okay.
And then, as far as the process goes, today, we're looking for the award for the ANE, and we're in the process of doing interviews for the C Mar. So, though, once we get the contractor on board, we'll be working in conjunction with them for a faster process, so.
So, you will be integrating the design with the other, so we're not doing A and then B and stretching the timeline out?
Correct, yes.
You want to try to get it compressed?
Yes.
Good, that's, I was concerned about the length of time, because I can tell you that what you're operating from nowadays reminds me of the World War II ones of huts I was using as a squadron building into the, into the 70s and 80s, you know, I mean, it's, it's really rough.
Make it work.
Really basic, but, so this is really, really important. And the last question I had, what's the, in a general square footage size, what's, it's a pretty good-sized building you're going to be dealing with?
Approximately 50,000.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, you've answered my questions, I just wanted to make sure that we had this process to where, once we started the design, we'd be working right into, into the, keeping it smooth, smoothly on track.
And there's probably, our supervisor, Eisenhower, is probably nobody more excited about this building than I am, I can honestly say that.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's very serious, it's a lot of money, but I want people to understand, if you've watched MASH, you have seen our General Services Building, and I don't say, I mean, I say that with just such sorry in my voice, and it is desperately needed. And so, yes, that is the MASH theme song. Thank God for Google. So, I don't have any questions, because I know that it is desperately needed, and I appreciate all the work that has gone into it and all the questions that my colleagues have asked.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you, too.
All right, with that, I need a motion.
Move the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
That brings us to Dyaskin Creek Watershed Management Plan Adoption. Mike, I believe, is going to present.
Good evening, or good afternoon, Madam Chair, it seems like it's evening, members of the board. Mike Wilson here, section chief for Stormwater. I'm also here with Ms. Toni Small, director for Stormwater, and we're here to present with our consultant, the Dyaskin Creek Watershed Management Plan for your consideration. The county has six approved watershed management plans, as I know y'all are aware, Palatin, Yarmouth, Mill, Gordon, Ware, and Skimino. Dyaskin Creek would make our seventh. Many things have changed in the 22 years since we've undertaken this program to do watershed management plans, including revisions to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance in 2004 and upcoming later this year in 2024, a bacterial TMDL for Palatin and Mill Creek in 2008, revised stormwater management regulations in 2011, and next month, 2024, and the municipal separate stormwater, or storm sewer system, the MS4 permit in 2013. This watershed plan is like our other plans in that it encourages improved management of the county's resources through development and private property owner incentives. The Dyaskin Creek Watershed is located in the northern portion of the county, and this, and identifies environmentally sensitive areas, develops specific protection, restoration, and infrastructure retrofit recommendations, including specific strategic actions for watershed protection. The plan also identifies watershed restoration opportunities, including the potential projects for the county's capital improvement and maintenance programs. Here today is our consultant from Stan Tech, Mr. Daniel Proctor, who will actually be doing the presentation, and we, after the presentation, Ms. Small and/or myself will be happy to answer any questions you may have, and we do look forward to a positive recommendation on the resolution. Thank you.
So, I'll try to be brief, excuse me. I'm going to provide an overview of the watershed plan, some of the findings and recommendations included within it, as well as the process we took, very similar to the other two within the past two years that were updated. So, some of these slides will look very similar as what you may have seen during Palatin and Yarmouth. The process in preparing the plan had three components. One was reviewing past information, monitoring data and public information that's available. We've also performed a field-level review of the conditions throughout the watershed and the stream channel, stream channels throughout the watershed, and then desktop-level analyses looking at various parameters affecting watershed health. A few key findings of each of those components we'll go through now. Regarding the review of monitoring data, the studies did show Dyaskin Creek as being impaired for bacteria levels. However, the monitoring data is very, very limited. That was something that was discussed and some recommendations for follow-up. As far as impervious cover trends over time, it's a very undeveloped watershed in comparison to some others within the county. In 2022, current conditions for this study, all the watersheds were identified as sensitive, and that's the highest level of water quality, using the impervious cover model, looking at future predictions based on zoning and the like. All of the watershed is still, most of the watershed is still retained its sensitive status, but there was one watershed that moved to the next level, considered impacted, with three more starting to move towards that transitional zone. As far as our- As far as our conservation area review, there's large, large portions of Dyaskin Creek watershed that is undeveloped, like I mentioned, and has some great opportunities for land conservation. Regarding the water quality modeling, because of the nature of the watershed, the overall water quality modeling showed a very less, much less water quality concerns, I would say, compared to some of the other watersheds within the county. There is some increase for future decline, where some of the, the future development may, may be slated around the Route 60 and Route 30 corridors, but significantly less concerns in comparison to others. So I did want to point out, if you look at the map color schemes for this plan and compare it to some of the others, we had to change those thresholds or else most of the water, all those subwatersheds would stay green. So even though you, you can see in the future conditions, some shifting to yellow and red, that's just to get that understanding of where the little changes are. Otherwise, it wouldn't pop out quite as much. You can also see that with the field assessments. Ninety-one percent of the stream channels we looked at were in good conditions. None of them were rated poor and only nine percent were in that marginal zone. As far as the flood risk review, there, there are some isolated areas within the watershed that is flood prone, but only 21 structures are currently located in the flood plan. And as far as critical infrastructure, it's just two pump stations associated with the reservoir itself. Looking ahead, the, but the recommendations will hit on this a little bit more, but there's also a significant number of buildings within the dam break inundation zone for the reservoir. The overall main takeaways, most of the watershed is very healthy and worthy of protection. There is that potential for adverse effects if some of the future development is not adequately mitigated for. Shifting to the recommendations of the plan, there were five categories. We'll describe some example recommendations within each of those now. As far as regulatory enforcement recommendations, similar to what we discussed in the other watersheds, it's a great opportunity to improve the county's special stormwater criteria, to get out ahead of that new development that may occur in the future, so that those effects are properly mitigated. A lot of opportunity for programmatic recommendations in Dyaskin regarding septic system inspections and clean out and repairs, as well as land conservation efforts. Regarding stormwater treatment practices and specific improvements, although much, much of the watershed is in healthy conditions, there were some isolated areas of stream erosion and water quality concerns that could benefit from some targeted improvements. And then a lot of opportunity for public outreach and just improving awareness of, of the, of the community as regarding septic system maintenance, as well as really embracing some of the rare, threatened, and endangered species that are present and making people aware of that value that's out there in their backyards. And last but not least, some flood plan management recommendations, one of which is increased communication with Newport News Water Works regarding the dam embankment at the reservoir and potential downstream hazards associated with, if there were to be an emergency related to the dam. In preparation of the plan, we went through a number of different public engagement steps. We set up a project website for the residents and other stakeholders within the county to be able to provide information on known issues, fill out a survey that was closed back in October of last year, and as well as communicate out any key announcements. There were two public meetings that were performed. We had a great attendance at the first one, a lot of feedback on some of the findings from the watershed assessment. And then we had a 30-day public comment period where the, the draft plan was put on the website and we solicited comments and got a number of comments during that process that was closed last month. And the current version of the plan has been revised based on that feedback. Great, and with that, I'll, we'll open it up to any questions.
Are there questions?
I just want to say it was very nicely done. I'm very glad to see another, another mark on the chalkboard. I know it's, it's a long, arduous process, but this is, will be helpful, I think, in, in dealing with what may be coming down the pike at us soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I do need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to policy to address solar energy generating facilities. Thomas, how are you today? Mr. Weisong?
I'm doing well. Good afternoon to the board.
Good afternoon.
Based on the guidance provided by the Board of Supervisors, planning staff has drafted a policy to address solar energy generating facilities within James City County. The proposed board policy will apply to solar facility cases that come before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, seeking legislative approval through the special use permit application process. The policy will set expectations for solar facility plan applicants, establish parameters to evaluate the solar facilities and their impacts to their surroundings, and provide guidance regarding the appropriate mitigation of these impacts through conditions and other measures. Staff finds the policy meets the guidance of the board and is ready for approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for staff.
Thank you. Questions?
Got a few. How do we balance the land we have with the amount of solar we allow? Just like with residential and commercial and anything else. I didn't see anything in there that, I saw some stuff in there that would basically prevent or it doesn't fit in this area, it doesn't fit in that area. But how do we, how do we balance that? If I look at that, I can put it in quite a few areas. So what, where's our balance to keep it hidden, keep it out of sight as much as possible, but not destroy our agricultural land? Because none of us know. It couldn't, it could be no problem, it could be a problem. I'm hearing both sides that, you know, both got good arguments both ways. I'm not a scientist, I don't know. But I would caution on the, the side of what could happen rather than what may not happen. So how do we balance that amount?
Great question. So there's a number of places in the policy that try to address that. For example, the policy says that solar facilities, solar facilities should not be located within 400 feet of dwellings that are existing. So that would be an important factor if somebody was proposing a solar facility that's right up next to an existing neighborhood. Staff would see that as a negative issue and an important thing to consider. Another example of that would be, there's a requirement here that solar facilities should be fully screened from the ground level by a 50-foot vegetated buffer. So the goal here is that if you're driving down the road, you wouldn't be able to see it. You know, there would be defective screening in place. Another example is that there should be a minimum distance of one mile between the fenced areas of separate solar facilities. That's the starting point. I think part of the reason there was that in some other counties and places outside of the Commonwealth, you can have an agglomeration of solar farms. So an entire corridor becomes just solar panels and that's what you're seeing. And so this condition is, starting with, there should be a minimum of one mile between those facilities. And closer could be considered, but there'd have to be a very high standard application to show why that's appropriate. So I mean, those are three parts of the, the policy that speak to those direct issues. I think that the general thrust and goal of the policy is to make sure that the community character of the county is not impinged upon and that when developers come in with an idea, they can look at the policy and figure out pretty quickly whether or not it's going to be appropriate.
Right, and the only thing I'm worried about is, is it fits, it's 401 feet? And it fits? And I've done everything that you've asked me to do here? And now you're denying me because you may think that there's, you know, should we? My question more is, should we have a cap that this percentage of land is dedicated to solar or could be solar, but no more? And once we hit that threshold, is that then the threshold that we stay and remain at? And of course, we know, we do a great job with buffering in the county. But one ice storm can take that 20 years of buffering out in three minutes. And so, you know, it's buffered, it works great, it's been buffered for 10 years, it's beautiful, everything's great. One ice storm, as we've seen in the past, and that buffering is gone and we have to start all over. And we will, but, you know, there's just, and we, we can't get every plan to work to what ifs. You know, it's just like fire, you know? They can't go, what if, what if all everybody's out? Should we hire 10 more people? You, you can't go with what ifs. But I think we could look at possibly the amount. You know, I don't want to, want a balance, but I don't want to run away, just like with everything else.
And I will say, in number eight in the policy, it doesn't have an exact amount.
Right.
It does state that the number and size of solar facilities in the county should be limited to preserve open space and adequately mitigate stormwater runoff, which doesn't exactly address what you're saying. But I think the principle's there.
Then it's who determines the amount.
Right.
You know, rather than, you know, I don't want to put it on staff to always have the, well, well, staff did this and staff did that. You hear it all the time. And it, it's almost like at times people think you're doing things just against them. Where if it's written that the policy says, we will only allow X, it takes staff totally out of it. We've reached that point in that we can't do with population. Of course, the state won't allow us. But we can with some of the other things that affect our community.
Mr. Weisong, on that same line, Essex County and Isle of Wight. Isle of Wight, they took all their agriculture land and they figured out how much it was and they said 2%. That's it. I talked to one of their supervisors the other day, they said, we just approved our last solar farm and that's it. And that leaves it no leeway, which is, I think, a good thing. And other counties are doing it across the line. They have a policy that says, this is the percent and that's it. Because otherwise, you know, you give an SUP for this person, but not for that person. And, and 400 feet? I don't want anything 400 feet from my house. It better be a half mile. I'm serious. Because these are, these are big things that emit stuff into the ground in your groundwater and your, the water we drink. These chemicals are coming into the water. I'm not a fan of solar, as you can figure out. But, you know, some of the small ones, you know, are not so bad. The one back on Racefield Drive and all of that. But these big ones are destroying our land and our water systems. And as Northern Virginia says, with all their data centers, they can't provide enough electricity to run their data centers. So just my thoughts. And I think, I think White County, Isle of Wight, and Suffolk, both, and other counties have just said, enough, let's just make it cut and dry. And I would appreciate that, I would like that, like Mr. Hippel.
Yeah, I've, I've mentioned the same thing before, I think, in, in talking. And this is counties across the Commonwealth with differing boards with different being political makeups. This is a real concern and they, they have gone to a percentage of their land. And so I'm interested in the same thing. And, you know, part of the, part of solar, I appreciate the energy. But what happens sometimes when you get these really big solar places is the energy's not coming here. It's not benefiting us. It's going somewhere else. And with all the data centers that are happening up in Northern Virginia, at my last VACO meeting, one of the counties had just done this huge solar project where it's all going up to the data center, which is neither, there's nothing that, but just things that we need to be mindful of as we move forward. So I'd at least like to look at, you know, how much agriculture land is there? What does a percentage look like prior to voting to? And I know, I've, I've seen the number of times this has gone, so I'm sorry. But I, I'm interested in looking, at least looking at that as well.
I do think that there are a couple of things that I, I see in the policy that are restrictive in terms of suggesting that, for instance, prime agricultural farmland not be a kind of area that we would prioritize for solar. I think we've seen that the technology allows us now to expect, not to experience a lot of erosion because now the panels are, can be required to be rotating and changing direction so that runoff will come in different directions. I'm, I'm not aware of any real clear studies that have suggested chemical leakage into, into the water system. But I'm certainly happy to look at that. And if that is the case, then obviously there's a concern there. But my impression is that we're not likely to see very much in the way of large-scale solar projects in comparison to some of the much more agricultural counties that are out there. I suspect that, you know, we, we had a proposal in front of us that would have dedicated particular share of the energy produced to residents of James City County specifically. And I think that what we're really seeing is more attention on some of those rural areas to provide that electricity for data centers. And I certainly agree that data centers consume an inordinate amount of, of the power that is generated in, in Virginia. And that's another issue that we ought to be thinking about because, you know, data centers seem to be popping up everywhere, not just in Northern Virginia. And, and so it could be that there will be a demand for that energy here as well. But I, I would say that, you know, we need to think about, think about this carefully. I'm happy to consider a kind of cap on the amount, but I'd also caution that the more restrictive localities are in this regard, the more challenge we're going to face from the Commonwealth, from the General Assembly in particular. We know that they're already talking about taking away authority from local governments on solar siting. And so I think we need to be prepared to defend what we're doing in, in a, in a very clear way and to understand that in some cases, people who have had agricultural land that's not in production now may be looking for ways to generate some income that is relatively passive and unobtrusive. So just some thoughts.
Yeah, don't disagree with, with that. But I would still be interested in seeing the amount of agricultural land that we have left, what a percent, what it looks like. At least, percentage, so.
And I, can I tag on to that? And I say, if we're going to look at the percentage of agricultural land, I would, I would suggest that to be meaningful, it ought to be looked at in terms of the policy that we've got in front of us. If you take a look at what the policy does, is the policy itself is very, very limiting. It's designed specifically to keep these big ones out. You've got small ones, it would probably allow a few further small ones. You take a look at the corridor of where you've got to be within a certain distance of, of a transmission line. That limits about half the county out. And then you've got the restrictions for distances from other, other things and a mile apart. And if you take a look at it and say, all right, we're going to start drawing where all of our current facilities are and draw a circle of a mile around that, then don't even consider land inside that because that's what our policy says we wouldn't be looking at. So there are a lot of things in this policy, I think, that, that really, really do restrict. And, you know, I, I've, I've witnessed, I think Culpeper actually used the number of acres instead of percentage. And some of these places use percentage.
Remember, when you set a limit, it becomes a target. You're saying what you'll accept. And now you don't have a whole lot of legal defense, as far as I can say, to turn people down if they meet all the other criteria and are within that limit. So you sort of open up the floodgates a little bit for it. If you really wanna be very, very straightforward about it, and I can defer to the county attorney here. But we could basically say, take a position that our policy is, we ain't gonna do anymore. That's one sentence. Forget it, you want solar, don't come to James City County. Would that survive a legal challenge?
It depends, sir.
These are things we gotta consider.
I'd prefer not to do that one, but.
Well, I, I can, I can, I almost assure you, the attorney probably wouldn't wanna do it that way. The question is, what are we trying to accomplish? We're trying to maintain the character of our community. And where these things do come in, we're trying to keep them small, isolated, separated, and out of view. Okay? And, and I think that, I'm, I'm a little leery about setting a, a two percent, five percent, ten percent. And then how do you define that, two or ten or five? Where's, where's, it, it becomes really, really a, a more fair game, and I, and I think it makes, it confuses the issue. Remember, Mr. McGlynn brings up a very good point. We are under constant threat from the General Assembly and from the solar industry and from all, from the, all of the power, the energy industries. Not just us, but all, especially the rural counties are gonna be under considerable threat of being viewed as overly restrictive and having our authority to restrict these things taken away from us by the General Assembly. And they can do that in a heartbeat, and if there's enough campaign money involved, they will. So I would suggest that whatever we do needs to be viewed by the members of the General Assembly and the public, and especially by the citizens of James City County, as reasonable. That they are reasonable steps to try to achieve a reasonable outcome on behalf of our citizens. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. The other thing I'll tell you is, I've, I've, I think if you wanna really see what greater threat to the groundwater would be, is the runoff off of our roads. You know, all the petroleum and oil products and everything get on there and run into the stormwater? I think that's probably more likely, that followed closely by all of the fertilizer that we put on our grass. So, I, I know, I know there are concerns about those things, but I've, and I will give staff credit. When I read this, this was probably, I considered to be considerably better than anything I've read before because when I got through reading it, I understood what I'd read. When I'd read the previous versions of the policy, I wasn't sure what it was. This is very straightforward, very specific, and there are multiple layers of protection for individual citizens and, and, and the members of the county without being, taking the ultimate extreme of saying, we're just ain't gonna do it. So I, if, if the board's interested in kicking it back to look at it, at a number, that's, that's the, if the majority of the board wants to do that, that's fine. I think, I just caution you that if you decide to go that way, what you're doing is you're setting a target. You're basically sending a clear message of what you're willing to accept. Right now, we haven't sent a clear message about what we're willing to accept. We're saying, if you wanna do it, you gotta meet all of these criteria, and it's a policy, and guess what? Ultimately, the board has the decision to, to either accept your application or not. And so that's, that's where I, I think we, you know, we potentially could lose some of our reasonable listening flexibility.
At the, worrying about the General Assembly, I'm not worried about the General Assembly and what they're gonna change. They're gonna change it whether we agree or disagree. And I'm not gonna, you know, look at, well, what, what happens, what could they do? And citizens, I'm, I'm only gonna do this because I'm worried they may do that. I'm gonna do what I feel is in the best interest of the citizens. Now, there's policy we've got in front of us, I've seen nothing wrong with it. I'm just looking to add one more component to it, not take anything away, but just add one. Where is the amount that we're willing to go to? That's what I'm looking at. And I don't think it's gonna open up anything, I think it's gonna be one more thing that says, they're only gonna limit X amount. I'm not even gonna bother with it, I'm not even gonna come there. And we're not saying we're shutting the entire door, we're just saying, we're gonna limit but so much. You know, I don't wanna see a solar panel on every roof, I don't wanna see a solar panel on every ground and piece of land and everything else. I think they're ugly for this, now, I'm not saying I'm against them, but I think they're.
Sounds like, sounds like.
If you look at them, you couldn't put anything much uglier than a solar panel. I mean, that is just, I mean, you can put all the lipstick you want on that pig, it's still a pig. And, and that's just the way I look at it, so I don't think they're attractive. Maybe in years they'll get attractive. I think their one more component of saving energy and producing energy is all the other things we have in there. It's not the one all, done all, and everything else, it's one more thing. If the sun's not shining, it's not doing anything. So, it's not collecting anything but dust. So, as far as, I'm just looking at not changing the policy, not redoing the policy. I think the policy is great, I think there's a lot of benefits in the policy. It's what you can and can't do, and how you, and you, it reads real well, it tells you what items you've got. I think the only thing is, I wanna take it away from staff. And it's not, I wanna take any power away from staff, I wanna take it away from staff where people say, well, I want this, well, we're, we're at, we're at our top end. Unless one comes out, another one can't come in. And it's not staff making a decision, because you know, as it goes, this board gets removed in three, four, five, six, whatever years, could be tomorrow, and a new board's sitting up here? And that board says, I don't care what staff says, I'm approving this, it's in. So, but this is just one more thing to go, okay, staff's saying you can't do it, staff's saying, no, policy says that this is the limit. You, it's the same thing as policy says within one mile. Policy says acreage that is protected under this, that, or the other. So, it's the same thing, it's just another thing added to the policy.
Well, I guess my sense is, why don't we go ahead and get a, a kind of feeling for what difference it would make in terms of if we set a particular cap versus what would already be restricted by virtue of what you've already put forward in this, in this set of criteria? You're exactly right that, you know, the policy says this or that, but it's also true, any board can say, well, yes, the policy does say this, but we find this case to be compelling enough that we will overlook that policy condition. So, you know, I don't, I, I don't think that it provides exactly the level of protection that, that, that might be suggested. But I, I do think that, as, as Mr. Eisenhower points out, that when you look at the, the constraints that are already listed here, there's not gonna be a lot of interest. And the, the folks who are doing those tens of thousands of acres in, in other parts of the state are not gonna be interested in coming in here in most instances anyway. These are gonna be smaller-sized projects that are proposed in one case or another. And, and while I understand that you, you don't like what solar panels look like, if, when you look at public opinion polling, most, most citizens tend to like the idea of relying more on solar, and so, you know, that's.
Although next to their house.
Well.
Yeah, you know, that's, but that's, but that's a restriction here. You know, we said four hundred feet from an existing residence, and, and four hundred feet, it may not seem like something, but you know, there, there are all sorts of things that are allowed within closer distances, cell towers, you know, power lines and so forth.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the staff look into the policies of these other counties and see what they've come up with. And see what their, what their policy says, and their, their policy went through, obviously, nobody's taken it away from them or they got it approved, approved, we need to look at it and see what theirs says, what theirs has in there that maybe we can use.
I think what we have to do is, we have to be very clear about what we're asking staff to do. Because, you know, clearly, there are different, five different opinions up here on the ass about if we're gonna have a number, what should that number be? And what you're basically telling staff is, one of my favorite exercises, you guys go back and come up with a number, and come back and tell us what the number is, and then we'll tell you if you got it right. And, and that, that's, I think, unfair to staff, because I think what we need to do, if we're gonna ask them to do this, is we need to tell them, okay, what are we looking at? Are we looking at a number of acres, are we looking at a percentage of the county? If we're looking at a percentage of the county, how do you define that? Do you automatically exclude what we've already excluded in this policy? And only look at the land where it could go, under this policy? That would make good sense to me. Because why would, why would you want to try to include acreage or percentage of the county on areas where it doesn't meet the other criteria that are already in here, that's already excluded? So, you know, if, you're, you're asking them to come up with a number. But we, we need to give them, I think, a little bit better guidance about what we want considered in coming up with that number. I mean, is that, that would seem to be a fair, fair way of going about doing it. Because if I were on staff, I'd be sitting here scratching my head saying, okay.
We didn't ask them to come up with the number, we asked them to look into that. And I think we're looking at the other policies that these other counties have, see how they arrived at a number. And I've heard two to five, and then I've heard other counties that take all the land of their, all their land in their county and then made a number, so there's different ways to do it, I just said, let's look at it. We didn't say come up with a number, we just said, maybe that's what we need to do.
And in all honesty, I, I asked this from the very beginning. It was one of the first questions that I asked. And if there was going to, if there was an issue, then, and I probably should have raised it, the other three, but I believe I've raised it a lot, and I'm just asking, I'm, I, I like solar, sorry. Wish I could afford to put it on my house, but I can't, but if I move, I, I might someday. But I, I have no issue with, Tom, did you decide you need to take a seat? So, I don't, if, if we, how, I don't know how difficult it would be to take what land that is left in this policy and then go from there and just see how much acreage is available to be developed? And if, if we might look at a percentage, or just, I'm not asking to make any changes in here, just come with a, the amount of acreage possible for solar development in the future? Is that possible?
I think what it would be very helpful for, direction for staff, we can come up, we can certainly pull some of the other ordinances for ones that have developed a percentage. In terms of numbers that we bring back to you, would the board be interested in seeing the amount of land, all land that's zoned A1 outside the PSA? Or land that's just being actively used as a farm? Or something different? Because those can be two very different numbers, happy to pull whatever you would like, can pull both if you.
I would think we would be, I would be most interested in finding out how much, under this current policy, meeting the constraints of, you know, the, of one mile between, so you'd start with the current ones and draw a mile circle around it and exclude everything in there. Just find out that under this policy, how much available land is remaining that would meet all the criteria that the policy is is right now today, that could be, could be developed? I mean, because you're, you're looking at, you know, it, it basically just, you take the map and you draw the circles and say, alright, everything that's out there, that's.
I think, I think it's, I think it'd be very straightforward for staff to take the, a map of the county. And to your point, for the, I think we have three solar farms that the board has approved so far under an SUP. Sort of draw those circles, and then we can look at what's left and bring that number back to you.
And draw the, the corridor that has it within two miles of the transmission line?
We could probably do that, I think anything more than that, once we start getting into property specifics and looking at setbacks and what's.
I think that, I think what you said is, is good.
No, I think you're, you're at the right level. This ought to be at a pretty macro level, but even at that level, you could exclude, for example, if, if it's three, four miles from the, from the nearest transmission line and, or it's within a half a mile of an existing one, that's probably, you know, existing solar farm. That's probably property that's not gonna be developed anyway under, under these guidelines. So let's look at what potentially under these guidelines could be developed, solar, and just see what we've got, because we don't even know.
And that would be outside the PSA?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I think, I think that would, that would be helpful.
And, and to Ms. Knoll's point, I think also if you can do a, a very,
and this, this is something you could probably shoot back to us even before the next session, or, you know, next work session, whenever we deal with this, is what are the differences that other counties have? Have they just taken a, a flat percentage of all land? And I mean, what, how did they come up with what the limitation that they have? So we have a little understanding, because I'm sure they're different from county to county. So that may take a little bit to, to dig that out, I don't know how many of them.
I think we know of two that we've found to be four, don't know of too many others. Might be a little bit more difficult to reach a staff contact to understand the, the political reasons why that locality chose that one. It'd be very straightforward to find the one that's been published as adopted.
Joe Lurch at VACO will probably have a pretty good sense of how many communities have done that.
Okay.
And what the numbers would be.
I wanna say, I, I don't wanna say that I'm anti-solar, I don't care what you do with your house, I'm talking about the big ones. Like what happened in Norvalia when they destroyed all the streets, just putting in a solar farm. And people are very upset by that, but anyway.
When do you think you could come back to us?
I need to get back to you on that, just to figure out what we're gonna do.
Okay.
This isn't a public hearing, so we don't have to defer to a date specific, so.
Okay.
You know, whether that's, you know, hopefully before your August recess break or not, we'll, I'll get back, and we'll get back in touch.
All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Thomas. Okay, that brings us to board request and directives, Ms. Knoll.
Well, I am, let's see, we attended the police department's awards ceremony last week, it was lovely. I mean, all these hard workers in our police department who, I just love our hard police department because I volunteer there. So I'm a little prejudiced on that. And then we went to the Teacher of the Year Awards, which were really nice down at that auditorium at the Colonial Williamsburg, and I just thought that was a really nice program to do for the teachers, I think that's great. And then, let's see, then we went to the VACO meeting, I guess Ruth and, well, we were all there except Michael. At the VACO meeting, and we talked about what's going on, and that was at the Law Center, so that, that people liked coming in there, it's such a beautiful building, and they really appreciate that. That's about it in the last couple of weeks, I think.
I have one.
Hey.
But it's forty minutes long.
Yeah, it's, it's upsetting, and this might be a General Assembly thing that we might have to wrestle with. As far as, I'm sure all y'all saw the thing at the rec center with the individual coming into the ladies restroom. And I can't say if it was a lady or a man, but the email says it wasn't a lady. So. Where I grew up, it must have been a man. But trying to, everything's so darn politically correct ninety percent of the time. And I know most things don't wanna get brought up out in the public or anything else. And I'll probably get jammed up because I'm bringing it up anyhow, but, you know, that's, that's, that's the problem I'm seeing going on in the United States right now. And to happen here in James City County is extremely frustrating. I don't know if we, I, I know we can't ban somebody if they think they're a man or they think they're a woman, and they may not be, but in their mind, they may be. And I feel sorry for that individual personally, I don't want anybody to feel something that they're not. I don't want anybody to feel something that they're not. But to have the opposite sex going into another restroom, even if you're feeling like you're the same sex. I don't know where we're going in this country, and what we're doing, and why we're not standing up for certain things we need to stand up for. I don't understand it, period. I don't like it. I didn't like the email. I didn't like the whole thing. And whether I get attacked about it or not, damn it, sometimes you gotta stand up for what you believe. And I don't think men ought to be going in women's restrooms, and I don't think women ought to be going in men's restrooms. Because there's children in there and everything else. And until we start standing up protecting our society, and protecting our children, we're doing a disservice to our citizens, period. And I know we're determined what we can and can't do by laws and everything else in the General Assembly. And we can't say this, and we can't say that, and we can't do that. But there's got to, there needs to be a time where we stand up and say enough is enough. And I'm sorry, but, you know, if there's ladies in the restroom, then the ladies need to be in the restroom. And if there's men in the restroom, the men's need to be allowed in their restroom. And we don't need to be switching back and forth and everything else. And I worry most of, for our children, and our young ones coming up right now. And I would like to see something in our package that goes to the General Assembly as far as how they can do something, where it's create another bathroom area or something for somebody who feels that way. I don't understand it, but I'm not saying that they shouldn't feel that way. I'm not saying that there shouldn't be something for that person. I know, then they say they're, you know, being targeted or whatever, I'm not targeting anybody. I just know how it should be, and how it was, and how it should stay. And I am extremely not satisfied, not happy, that this even happened in our community, and that the General Assembly is allowing it to happen, and allowing us no way to go, this, this is, this is just not right. I don't care what you say. That's my two cents. You know, sorry to bring it up, but I'm irritated at it for today. So, I apologize to the board for having even put it out in, in the general public. It's a shame. Thank you.
Well, I think that Ms. Knoll covered the events that, that I attended as well, and appreciated the opportunity to be at all of those events. And I think a highlight of the police event was, in fact, the idea that there was a wall of valor created that extended the ceremony a little bit longer, because it did look at folks who had accomplished great things over the, the years previous, but is a very nice recognition of the great work done by our police department. And I think I'll leave it at that.
I got a couple of things. I've been to the Workforce Council meeting, and I thought I would share one thing from that. You know, I think I mentioned earlier, the board certification that annual budget for that is up to around $40 million a year. And they do a lot of good work, especially in maritime. But just the basic Virginia career works, they have a little, four slides that show a recap, and I thought it was very straight to the point. This was for the last 10-month period. First-time visits to the career works, almost 10,000 visits for the first time, a total of 20,000, count people, including people who've been back multiple times. We've obligated up to about $1.5 million in training obligations for those folks. New training starts 313, credentials earned 246, employment placements 119, at an average wage of $26.69. And then they give you specifics, and these are individuals. An electrician's helper starting at $17.50 after they've completed the training. Another one has a transit driver trainee at $20 an hour in the trainee program. The commercial driver's license trucking company, $33.75 an hour, and registered nursing starting at $34 an hour. So, the, it's, it's very effective. We're getting, getting a lot of, of good, good results for, for our, our dollars down there. I, I do want to tag on about the police awards, and I will tell you that it's, it's always a very moving ceremony, and I'm, I'm very grateful that we're invited. Extend my thanks to the chief and the whole force. But I think the most telling thing to me, I mean, there were a lot of life-saving awards, but the most telling thing to me was the number of times that people were awarded valor awards for things that could have easily, with great justification, ended up being an officer-involved shooting. But did not, because our training and our police de-escalated those. And that's something the public does not see. I think that everyone in this county ought to be extremely proud of our police department. It is, it is a very professional organization, and I was very moved by that. And I, I want to thank every police officer that works for James City County. Did participate in a short strategic plan meeting with, where we got to split our two cents worth in. It was sort of interesting, especially since Michael and I were paired together.
Yes, indeed.
I had to work hard to get my two cents in. The VACO II region meeting was very nice. And then that evening, we had a town hall meeting where Ruth got to experience Ford's Colony. They didn't, they were very nice. They didn't bring any rotten tomatoes this time, so, but we did have about 150 people, maybe, 150 or so, that come out. We do this every year, and so the three of us were there and took questions. And it always runs over, but it was, it was very good to get out and talk to the folks there. And I did want to relate that I, in my capacity on the Chamber of Commerce, I was recruited by Heather Harmon of Henderson Construction, who is working the Walk to End Alzheimer's Program this year. And she's come up with a unique way of raising money for that. And that is, she has approached people in the community, and I was one of the ones that was strong-armed, to put my name and picture on, on a website, and that when $500 gets donated under my name, then I have to go submit myself to taking a cream pie in the face. So, if you guys want, if you guys want to see it, get your checkbooks out. This is going to start in June. They're going to start raising the money, and the walk will actually be in October, I believe. But I'll give you more details on how to get on the website and make your donation, so you can take a good shot at me. Anyway, I'll do that for charity. The last thing I wanted to say is that Memorial Day every year is a personal. I didn't get to go to the ceremony out there, because John was standing out there in the rain with his umbrella, and I, I was thinking about the lightning bolts. I decided I was going to not take that chance. But it's always about Memorial Day, it's about the people we've lost. And I cannot go Memorial Day without thinking about my squadron commander from Vietnam, who was shot down on the 2nd of November, 1969. His name's on the wall. I flew probably about 15 or 20 missions with him. He was a very, very engaging individual. And I didn't realize it until I looked it up, but he and I shared a birthday. He would, he would be 95 years old this year if he'd survived. But his, he's been listed as missing in action ever since. They've never recovered him. But I, I, I do hope that everyone has someone that they can think of who gave their all for the country. That's what Memorial Day's all about. Thank you.
You can also take an opportunity to get me in the face with the woo pie for the Alzheimer's Association. I wanted to mention, well, first of all, let me, let me thank you for going out there for the, for the service, John. You're always so good about representing us at different events, so thank you for that. I attended the Lighten Up, It's Just Politics, something put on by BPAP. I went as a guest of our lobby firm. It was really, it was good, it was funny, it was a wrap-up of the General Assembly session, and everybody got along. So, it was, it was a great event. So, I thank Adam Kinsman for getting me involved in that. And also, just want to thank everybody for coming to the VACO meeting, and thank Brad, and for giving such a great tour. And it was, they said, was this just built? You know, everybody, just the, the law enforcement center was just something else. And, and the foresight to build it, to, with, still for growth. And, and Brad just did such a great job. And thank you, chief, for, for hosting us. Thank everyone here at the county that helped pull that off. And if VACO asked, and from the get-go, we said yes, and just really appreciate that. And then it was good to go to Ford's Colony. And so, just, it's, it's a busy time of year. What do they, they call it, May-December, I think? Because it's so many events and things like that, so, and we are in the thick of it. So, with that, reports of the county administrator.
Madam Chair and Board, just a few quick items, yes ma'am.
I'm so sorry.
No worries.
I even wrote this down. I want to give an update to somebody that I've talked about from this dais, which is Langdon, who I have made appeals for, for, for his liver and his kidney. He's a young man, J.B. Blatton student, and he received his donor kidney, living donor kidney, and a living donor liver last week. And he is in the hospital. He's doing okay. He's had some rough patches, so please keep him in your thoughts and prayers, and his family. But a huge thank you to his donors. One wishes to remain anonymous. One has been out with him, there's been some fundraising. They are both teachers at WJCC School System. One of them is Langdon's teacher. But this is life-changing for that young man. And also, his mother, I wish I had thought to, to print it before I came here. His mother shared something about living donation and the percentage that it makes when it's a living donor, any kind of donor, organ donor, donation is so needed. But when you are a living donor, the difference that that makes in rejection and all kinds of things, that it just helps so much, is tremendous. So, if that's where your heart leads you, I ask you to please consider it. But keep Langdon in, in your thoughts and prayers, and his family, and his donors, and, and bless them. Sorry, but I wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
A couple, a couple items. Hurricane season begins June 1st. Our predictions are for an active season, so just a reminder to all of us to, we're supposed to be prepared to support our family for a period of three days should an event disrupt our normal lives. And so, now's a good time for us all to refresh our items that might have expired, make sure we look after our, our family members, including our pets, and then develop our emergency response plans with our families. Also mentioned Newtown Tunes, they're winding down. We go through June 12th, so the next three Wednesdays, 12, well, 5:30 PM, weather permitting, behind Sullivan Square, Legacy Hall in Newtown, back in the grass. And again, until June 12th. And then our Parks and Recs Department is again sponsoring their Longest Day of Play to celebrate the summer solstice, which begins June 20th. And you can join us by starting at 5:47 in the morning, and running through about midnight that day. And there's a full list of activities on Parks and Recs' website, which you can get to that by searching James City County Longest Day of Play, and it gives you a full list of what the day includes. So, just wanted to share those three items.
Thank you. Do we have to start at 5:40 and go the whole day?
No, ma'am, you can jump in wherever you'd like, but 5:47 is when it kicks off.
Okay, great. All right, I need a motion to enter into closed session for the following items. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly-held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia and regarding the parcels along Route 60 Pocahontas Trail and Route 675 Grove Heights Avenue. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly-held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia and regarding the portion of the property upon which the Ambler House is situated. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly-held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia, and particularly, property situated at 2054 Jamestown Road. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly-held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia and regarding the property identified as 110 Nina Lane. Discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an opening session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29 of the Code of Virginia and pertaining to the contract for the joint operation of schools between the county and the city of Williamsburg. Six, consideration of a personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and or commissions pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. A, Appointment, Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Trustees. B, Staff Appointment, Peninsula Alcohol Safety Action Program. C, Appointments, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Isner?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Isner?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to certify the closed session?
Have Chair certify that we only spoke about those items? We indicated we would speak about going into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Ms. Knell.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye. All right, Mr. Eisenhour.
Okay, we have, I will move the following appointments to the Peninsula Alcohol Safety Action Program. Assistant Chief Police Monique Myers reappointed to term beginning July 1st, 2024 and expire on June 30th, 2027. And for Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Julian H. Lipscomb. And, let's see, Michael C. Hand and Kev. Radcliffe, all for terms to expire on April 12th, 2028.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Ms. Knell.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye. With that, if I could have a motion for adjournment until 5:00 PM on June 11th, 2024 for our regular meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Ms. Knell.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye. We're adjourned.